Good evening. This time, please silence your cellphones and be advised these proceedings are being recorded. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form available at the entrance and present it to the City Clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. This time, I call to order the City of Grand Terrace City Council, City Council's successor agency to the Community Redevelopment Agency and Housing Authority for June 25th, 2019. This evening, we will be closing in honor of Grand Terrace resident Esteban Carlos Gonzalez. And Councilmember Robles will talk a little bit about him during her report. At this time, if you would please stand. And we're going to have a moment of silence for those who have given their lives in order for us to have the freedom that we enjoy in this country. And then following that, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by our City Manager, Harold Duffy. We will commence a moment of silence at this time. Thank you all. Mr. Duffy?
Mr. Chairman, over your heart. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, may we please have roll call?
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Hussey.
Present.
Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Mayor Protem Ro- I'm sorry.
I am here.
Councilmember Robles.
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Robles.
President.
Mayor McNaboe.
President.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We have a couple of special presentations today. The first one is for an athletic accomplishment for Alicia Flores. And I'm going to let Mayor Protem talk a little- oh, excuse me, not Mayor Pro- Councilmember Robles. Yeah, it's Confusion Day. Councilmember Robles, is your honoree here today? Okay, I don't see her either. Well, how about if you read the commendation and we'll make sure that she gets it?
Okay. Whereas Alicia Flores has attended schools in the Colton Unified School District since preschool and graduated from Grand Terrace High School in the spring of 2019. And whereas Alicia has played in youth sports within the community of Grand Terrace from 2015-19, she has received a number of awards such as Scholar-Athlete, Sunkist League Champion, Division III CIF Champion, Final Four in Division I CIF Playoffs, All League, and Principals Honor Row, just to name a few. And whereas Alicia has performed many community service hours volunteering at her local church serving the homeless, serving as a teacher's aide in special needs class at Grand Terrace High School, is a member of the Best Buddies Program, assists with clinics for young softball players who are inspired to learn the game of softball, and teaches mechanics at successful hitting. And whereas in 2019 Alicia was chosen Grand Terrace High School Female Athlete of the Year, awarded all CIF honors by CIF Southern Section, and has received a full softball scholarship to attend Oklahoma University in the fall of 2019. She is also the 55th Annual Ken Hubbs Memorial Award recipient for the 2019 Female Athlete of the Year. So from the Mayor of the City of Grand Terrace and the City Council, we thank and commend Alicia Flores for her hard work, dedication, loyalty to the City of Grand Terrace citizens and community.
Ms. Flores is probably off somewhere having a good time. She will receive this nice commendation. She will also receive our lapel pin, which is a key to the city with a little logo on it, so that she can show her pride wherever she goes, especially when she's off to college, and we will make sure that she gets that plaque. We also have some recognition tonight for Community Day Committee Chairs. And Madam City Clerk, do we have members here tonight?
Yes, we do, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Our certificate of recognition that each will receive doesn't go as the only thing that shows their dedication. But the certificate reads, "Thank you for your dedication and contribution to the 2019 Community Days event. Your time and efforts made a world of difference in what we accomplished." And it's presented this 25th day of June 2019, and it's signed by all of the council members. And this is just a token of our appreciation for the hard work that they've put in to do such wonderful things for our committee- or, excuse me, for our community. So I'm going to call the names of each of the recipients. And I'm going to ask those of you that are here, if you can, to come to this side of the dais so that we can recognize you and give you your certificates and have a nice photo op. So we'll start with Johan Gallo. Edward Giroux. And Renee Walker. So we have a nice certificate for you, and we also have lapel pins with the city seal. If my colleagues will join me? All right. Well, there you go. I was. I was going to have you in the meeting. What's that? The senior bus. The senior bus just got here. All right. All right, Ms. Alicia Flores, where are you? We did a dry run before you got here. Are you ready?
[laughter]
Councilmember Robles, if you would?
We're going to do a little bit of a condensed version this time. Alicia Flores attended the schools in Colton Unified School District since preschool. She graduated from Grand Terrace High School in the spring 2018. She has played sports in this community. She's received such awards Scholar-Athlete, Sunkist League Champion, Division III CIF Champion, Final Four CIF Playoffs, All League, Principals Honor Row, just to name a few. She's helped the homeless. She's served as a teacher's aide for special needs kids. She's a member of the Best Buddies Program. She helps softball players who are inspired to learn the game and teaches mechanics at successful hitting. And this year, she was named Grand Terrace High School Female Athlete of the Year, awarded all CIF honors by the CIF Southern Section, and has received a full scholarship to attend Oklahoma University. She's the recipient of the Ken Hubbs Memorial Award honoring her as the 2019 Female Athlete of the Year. So on behalf of our Mayor Darcy McNaboe and the City Council, we want to thank you and commend Alicia Flores for her hard work and dedication.
Since we have such a wonderful celebrity in our midst, will you please come to the lectern and tell us a little bit about your plans for the future?
My plans are to play college softball and finish with a college degree and hopefully to get a great job to be physical therapist. But this is a great opportunity, and I'm thanking everybody for coming for this, and it's pretty cool.
Councilmember Hussey.
Well, congratulations, and you worked hard your whole life to get to where you're at. Continue with your goals and your dreams, and I'm sure you'll become a physical therapist if that's what you want to do. But yeah, just don't let anybody tell you no, which you already know that. You know, they can't do it. So congratulations on all your hard work, and thank you for everything you've done for everybody.
Thank you.
Councilmember Allen.
Yeah, I'd like to just offer my commendations to you. And I'd also like to say that I'm really impressed by all the service back to your friends and your colleagues in the community that you have. Not just, you know, your success in school, but your willingness to look to the younger crowd, those younger than you, and try to offer them guidance also. And so keep that up all through your life.
Thank you.
In front of me is what you get to walk away with and hang in a prominent location, which is what Councilmember Robles read. This is all about you here. And it's signed by each of the councilmembers. And then we have a lapel pin for you that is a key with the city seal on it that we expect you to wear when you go off to college. And if you would come over here, we would like to take a picture with you. One more round of applause for Alicia and for- and one more round of applause for our wonderful volunteers who chaired the event for the Community Days this year. We will move on to our consent calendar. Our consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial, and they will be acted upon by the City Council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests for removal? Madam City Clerk?
No, Madam Mayor.
Were there any requests? Okay. See, now I'll undertake a motion for the consent calendar.
And Mayor, I'd like to make a motion and approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hussey, second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
Thank you. Next item is public comment, and this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the City Council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. Items may also have a brief response from staff to questions raised, and an item may be requested to be agendized on a later meeting. Do we have requests to speak? Thank you. Our first speaker is Johan Gallo.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Johan Gallo, 22808 DeSoto Street, Grand Terrace. I realize it's on the agenda today to be accepted for the next council meeting, but I wanted to, first of all, thank and acknowledge Lieutenant Wolf for all the work that he did to help me put together all the language for the grant proposal to Assemblymember Reyes. We really took a hard look at all the things that we need to do in order to add the additional license plate recognition cameras, to revitalize the Neighborhood Watch program, and all the things that we need to make our city safer. And I hope that the council looks at that, and if there's anything that we need to do to rethink what we have in the proposal once it's tabled, we'll be happy to address that at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Heather Perry?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, and I first want to congratulate you, Mayor, as being elected as president for SBCTA. So I just wanted to do an update. This is a public service announcement from the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department. It's about the NICSIL Community Information Service. It is a type of reverse 911. It's a robocall during emergency service, floods, fires, which we're coming up on the season of fire right now. I know that maybe down in the valley, we don't have as many issues. Mentone, I know, maybe Force Falls a little bit more, has a flooding issue, and then fires, we can't. But the important thing is that they only call landline. That's the only thing that's recorded or in their system. You can get a text or have a message sent to your phone, a call or a text to your phone, but you have to register that. And most people don't have landlines anymore. So I was just coming here to encourage people to register their cellphones as a text. You can do it online. I have flyers. I'm going to leave it. I apologize, I have to go to another meeting tonight. So I will leave some flyers up by the agendas with your permission. And then you can also, if you do not have internet, you can call 211 and register that way. You can only call 211 and register for the San Bernardino County if you have a 909 area code. So if you have a different area code on your cellphone, then you'd go to the library. But this is through the Sheriff's Department that I have this flyer here. So if anybody needs anything, that's it.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. And Bobby Forbes.
Good evening. It's fireworks season. They're about to open the booths. Can you hear me? Am I okay? So I'm here to plead to the people that haven't registered their dogs, don't have their dogs chipped. Please do so. Let's make a mad dash to City Hall and get your dog's license, but most importantly, get a name tag on your dog, even your cat. Some way to get your dogs home, because this weekend's going to be not good, or next weekend, excuse me, it's going to be bad. Colton has signs all over the west of La Cadena. Thankfully, they're on the corners of Grand Terrace properties as well, but those people are not paying attention to the signs already. You know, the cops have been over there a lot lately, the last three nights. I've been calling them, and the neighbors have been calling them. It's like a war zone. And it's going to be that way in Grand Terrace, too. So please, folks, just do something. Get your dogs, keep them in, do whatever you need to do. You can buy calming pills at PetSmart. You can go to your vet and get them. And I do not recall having it come before the council this year to protest about the selling of the fireworks. Maybe that happened, and I just happened to miss that meeting. But I've been protesting fireworks since they started 24 years ago in Grand Terrace, and at least now we have it down to one day of shooting them off. But I'd really like to see them go away completely. So I'm going to pay more attention next year and see if you bring it up, so that maybe there's a couple of people besides me that would like to have them stopped. And I know it's a fundraiser, but maybe there's another way we can get that. And then could the information that was just given, I missed where she's going to put the information. Is it up here or in the lobby?
I believe she said she was going to put it right there.
Oh, just put it right here next to me. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for their communications. We'll start with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take just a real quick minute to offer my personal thanks to all the city volunteers. I know that we honored the community members who make it possible for our community events. And those are the folks, I mean, our city would slowly, it would really slow down without our volunteers. You're vital, and we love you, and we thank you so much for what you give. Since our last meeting, I had the opportunity to attend the Mayor's and Council Members' Executive Forum. It's a two-day-long training seminar, and we learned a lot about homelessness, social media, land use, and workforce development, youth leadership, my favorite, one of my favorite subjects, when we learned about the benefits of having youth leadership in your city, economic development, and of course, our favorite topic this year, cannabis laws. And then on the following day, we had the Advanced Leadership Workshop where I learned an immense amount of information about city finances, so I'm ready to study the budget. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Bill Hussey.
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for coming out here tonight and re-inspires what Ms. Forbes said. You know, we're already getting illegal fireworks shooting off, and, you know, please, you know, that night, if you could lock your pets up or, you know, take care of them, register them, get them a license, like she said, because, you know, it's going to be crazy, and they wander around, and, you know, we don't want anybody, anybody's animal to get hit by cars, too, because, you know, people do fly through the city. But if you, you know, if somebody's lighting illegal fireworks by your house, you can still turn them in, you know, don't be, act like, you know, you can't. But it's bad, and unfortunately, sometimes it leads to fires or something else, some kind of other hazard thing that happened. We had a lot of rain, and there's a lot of dry vegetation right now. So with that saying, I just want to wish everybody a happy Fourth of July when it comes here. God bless. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
Thank you. I'm just going to bring up my notes. I also attended the Mayor's City Council Executive Conference, and I attended the general session on communications. The social media one, I think, was called the Sixth Council Member. It was quite intense, and they have it set up now, there's no paper, everything's digital, and they have it where you can't take their PDFs and share it, because I wanted to do that. But I'm just going to go over some things, skim them, because I think these are things that we can address in our team building and procedures that we're going to be discussing later on. But just so, there is no violation of Brown Act, as long as a third member doesn't comment on an item. But that case law's still evolving on the issue, and some councils have a strong policy against city council members discussing agenda items on social media. So it seems like there needs to be some clarity there. There was some strong discussion because there's litigation, so we need to be able to answer what a personal page is. If we're on the, have a personal page, but we're posting city items, events, or having discussions and those kinds of things, we need to be careful about whether that's a personal page or not. We are obligated to have open access, and we can't block people from our Facebook pages if it's deemed our political page. I also attended effective communication with your city manager. And also, this was quite detailed, and it was mainly about how the lack of effective communication between the city manager and elected officials can affect staff and what can be done about it, and that they suggest that we establish clear understanding and mutual expectations regarding communication and information sharing, and that we reestablish communication expectations each time the council changes. And that's a synopsis of that. I requested adjournment in memory of Esteban Gonzalez, who was a Colton High School graduate and a resident of Grand Terrace. He was 48 years old. The evening of our Community Days, he was struck by a drunk driver on Palmita in Iowa. He died of his injuries the following day. Family members were injured. I don't know how they fared, but he's going to have his services this Friday, and I wanted to make sure the family knew that, you know, we are aware of this loss, and we also feel it deeply. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Protem Doug Wilson.
Mayor, I'll defer to you for my time. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Unfortunately, I don't have a long report tonight, but maybe I could make some things up. Going back to Community Days for a minute, one of the things that I noticed is that we had some community partners that came out to do their displays for us. The Sheriff's Department brought out some fun toys for people to play with, and we had some other really wonderful vendors that came out. I wanted to mention the Boys and Girls Club. This year, we contracted with them, as we have in the past, for the summer swim program. And so some of you may have already signed up for that. The signups started on June 3rd. But they had the nice little takeaway at their booth to remind people about that. And then they had a giveaway of books. And this is an example of one of the packages that they had. And this is for the younger kids, but they had books for all ages, and they just, they brought those, and they gave away books all day. And that was one of the most popular booths there. And I just thought that was a wonderful thing for them to do as one of our partners, to show up and give books. So this will be going to the library for somebody that needs it, and I wanted to thank them for their time. And then I was keeping it local, having lunch. I like to do that when I have an opportunity. And today, I just happened to be at La Pasta, and Gloria, who works there, told me that she watches us on the council meetings. So I told her that I would say, "Hello, Gloria, and thank you for watching." And I will end my report there. We have no unfinished business, no, excuse me, we have no public hearings, so we'll move to unfinished business, which is our fiscal year 2019-2020 budget revisions, including budget deliberations on paperless agendas, additional traffic officer approval of use Rule 20A funds, reinstatement of merit increases, and use of childcare funds, fund balance. May we have a staff report? Ms. Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council. My name is Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager. Tonight, we are going to continue budget deliberations and request adoption of our fiscal year 2019-20 proposed adjustments. The staff report supports all the city's vision and goals by ensuring our fiscal solvency, maintaining public safety, promoting economic development, developing and implementing successful partnerships, and engaging the community in proactive communications. The budget revisions that are proposed for council's review support the city's mission, vision, and core values. Maintains the current level of service with focus on public safety and economic development. The proposed revisions do not require the use of fund balance, maintaining a balanced budget, and we do recognize that strong, the strong economic recovery in the cities and strategically invests in the city's future. So as provided the City Council prior, we had some revenue estimates, projections. So the reductions that we had had at this time, one is we are reducing our revenue items by 80,000 in relation to proceeds that we would receive from sale of any property. We've decided these are all one-time funds, and should any property be sold, we would be coming separately to City Council for approval on use of said funds. Also, in miscellaneous, two years, last year when we approved this line item, we had anticipated about one-time revenues that we would be receiving. We did receive it in 1819. However, current activity is not showing that we may be receiving that. So to be very conservative, I also showed that as a reduction. that, so to be very conservative, I also showed that as a reduction. And residual receipts from the senior center, normally after the operations of the senior centers, receiving the revenues and their operating expenditures, should they have any residual, the city's supposed to get a portion of that. At one time, we did get a $60,000 receipt from them, we got that in 2017. We have not received any in 18, and again, to be conservative, I do not know if we're going to receive any in 19, so I made that as a reduction. So our proposed revenues show an overall reduction of about 180,000. Also in our revenues, we also show increases. And the first one is assuming that we do receive approval from the Department of Finance to provide city council with an update. The agency approved the defeasement, the countywide oversight board did, we had since submitted it to the Department of Finance, they have 100 days to approve. However, we did inform them that we are looking forward to this 210 allocation by January and hopefully that they can send their approval, we're looking between August and September 1st. So that would be a 210 receipt in January. We've also seen a little bit of increased activity in our building and safety reviews, our planning reviews. Our continued enforcement of city codes is also showing just a little bit of increase. In addition to that, okay, the, I apologize, the description is wrong, but the $35,000 is supposed to be for interest earned as a result of the 2.8 million that we did receive in providing us the ability to spend our remaining 15%. Of course, in the following years, as we spend that 2.8 million, the expected interest will decrease. And the wastewater lease, when we signed the lease with the city of Colton, the annual lease was supposed to have been, was agreed at 300,000. However, the lease agreement indicated that should they increase their super rates, the lease agreement that we have with them should automatically increase, and they had done that. Their last increase was in 2017, so that increase actually resulted in an 18,000. So in July, we're expecting to receive 318,349 for the annual lease agreement with, with the city of Colton. So with our revenue reductions and our revenue increases, that shows a net increase of 103,000, which was summarized in Table 1 on page 59 and as shown on the screen. So with that, we had also, we are proposing some expenditure adjustments, and this is just to, to provide a summary. In the city manager's office, we are requesting to increase the bus drivers' hours to approximately two hours more per day. As council is aware, the Silver Liner provides bus services to the city's senior center participants, and this is, this includes services to and from the center establishments within and surrounding Grand Terrace, and they do have other, also planned activities which will include dinner at Woody's or lunch at La Pasta. These are activities that are planned on a monthly basis, and we have since seen an increase in ridership. However, this is a limited bus, it can only take so much, and because her hours are from 9:00 to 2:30, it makes it difficult for her to make a second trip for those who would want to attend whatever activity we are proposing. So the increased hours would actually allow the Silver Liner to make two bus trips, to come back for a second batch, that would like to do whatever activity is proposed for that day. We're also asking to fully fund the Budget Officer, Principal Accountant. The position again is approved, but to balance the year's budgets, we were looking at only funding it part-time. The part-time annuitant gave her notice last year, so she will be leaving us in the next two, three months, so I'm requesting to fund that full-time, so we do get the benefit of a full-time position. And then, of course, we have the request for software licensing for 12,500. That is a software that would provide this city with real-time costs on our pension and OPEB liabilities. Again, the CalPERS Actuarial is based on a two-year-old activity, not including the current year, which means our Actuarial is still based on 2017 actuals, which still includes the childcare employees. This will allow us the ability to calculate it today, to call in, meet with CalPERS to say, this is my current liability instead of what they charge us today. At this point, I don't have data and we are forced to actually pay the annual required contribution that they would normally have us pay. And then our last request for the increase in benefit allowance for the existing employees, they have not received a cost of living allowance in almost 10 years. They did receive a one-time merit increase, which was approved by council in 2016. The increase in benefit allowance will more accurately reflect all medical costs that are incurred by employees, and it does not contribute or increase the city's pension liabilities. So our total request and increase is about 107,000, as, as shown again in the table in the staff report. So if you looked at that last column, we've increased our revenue and we've increased our expenditures, and we're still netting, so the revised proposed adjustments again does not request a use of fund balance. Should city council have any questions? They can stop me at any time, otherwise I will continue.
Councilmember Allen.
Is the, the increase in benefit allowance, that benefit, is that a use or lose benefit?
No.
Okay.
Yeah. It is a use, if you don't use it to pay for your medical costs, the balance is provided to you in cash. Or you have the option of putting it in a deferred compensation plan.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Continue.
So to continue, there were a few other items that city council has requested that we discuss, two ways for paperless agendas. So what we took a look at is to see what the cost would be if we were to purchase Microsoft Surfaces or iPads for city council, and this is a rough estimate. We would have a one-time cost of 14,500. We would no longer be making hard copies for city council. And what we would be purchasing again is the ability for city council to actually, when they receive the agenda, which is of course in, is in Adobe Acrobat format, the ability to actually write on the surface of their iPad, and once they hit save, anything they have written gets incorporated into that document. They have a choice of putting those comments aside or actually incorporating it on the document itself. If you've seen the Microsoft Surface commercial, it's actually a pretty good demo. And we are projecting that the annual maintenance of said costs will be 2,800. So what we were also asked is to look at what it currently costs us today to provide hard copy agendas to all five council members, and we estimated that about 7,200. So bearing the one-time costs, we will actually be showing savings annually as a result of moving to paperless agendas. Traffic enforcement. So we were asked to have this discussion on assigning a traffic officer at least once a month at various times and locations throughout the city, and we had estimated that at about 500 a week, about $2,000 a month to $24,000 annually.
Councilmember Allen.
I'd like, hi, Ms. Fortune, I'd like to go back to the surface or iPads.
Yes.
How often, it seems like the, the big-ticket item up there are the five pieces of hardware.
Yes.
It says for 10,000. How often would we need to replace those? Do you, has there been an estimate done on like their life expectancy? Would it be each time a council member turns over, or would they just be, I mean, this, I'm just wondering, how often would we incur that $10,000?
Depending on the use, yeah. If it's only going to be used for council and nothing else, I'd like to think we can extend this about five to seven years.
Okay, thank you.
Please continue.
Review of Rule 20A funds. So before the council's review is a proposed memorandum of understanding with the city of West Hollywood for the exchange of unallocated Rule 20A funds. And this entails the transfer of 200,000 of Rule 20A proceeds, in return of which the city would receive, the city's general fund would receive 110,000. Should the city council choose to approve the agreement, which we provided as an attachment, we would also request that they authorize the city manager to execute that agreement.
You had a question on this item or on the next one?
No, it was just, global ones always.
Okay, she said please continue.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm a little hard of hearing tonight, forgive me. So our next item is proposed merit increases. So our budget development guidelines that were approved by city council state that should additional revenue sources be identified, the city manager may submit personnel budgets that may consist of the following, a proposal of merit adjustments, a proposal of a cost of living, or a combination of either items. And, and any reinstatement of the above items are always subject to the policy direction of city council. So we calculated what the cost of merit increases would be for 2019 for affected employees, so not cost of living, just merit increases, and this is salaries. The merit increase was the benefits associated with that particular merit increase. So the total would be roughly about $31,000, of which 26,000 will be a general fund expense. This is how our salaries are actually allocated by fund. So what we did was also allocate said merit increases. Okay, so now we move to the childcare fund. On July 10, 2018, council approved the sale of childcare facility at about 910,000, less any commissions and costs, we netted 850,000. As council has been aware, the childcare fund was carrying a negative balance, and the bulk of that really is their share of unfunded accrued liability. So when we, when we went to council shortly after that, we actually requested approval to take out that negative balance, pay for 17, 18, and 18, 19's, the childcare personnel's share of unfunded liability. So they authorized the use of 615,000, which left us a net of 234,000. In March, a few months ago, we informed city council that we would be coming back during the budget process to request the appropriation of that addition of that remaining funds. So tonight, we are requesting two things, that 150,000 be set aside for their share of the 19, 20 unfunded accrued liability, we are requesting the balance of 84,000 be transferred to the general fund, because in 2021, that, that total expense will now be a general fund obligation. So that is the request for the childcare fund.
I have a question on that.
Yes.
So the 84 or 50 that's left over?
Yes.
Does not have to be allocated towards the purpose that staff is recommending, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so it could be used for something in this particular budget that we might be looking at?
Yes, it can. If you authorize the transfer today, we will transfer it July 1st, and it can be used, it is general fund money, so it can be used as council deems appropriate.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Mr. Duffy?
If I just might, just a point of clarification, the 150,000 UAL share for childcare is going to be, is still going to be, need to be paid the next year, but it's going to be paid for, by the general fund.
No, I understand that. Thank you.
Okay, we, we provided this to council at the last meeting, so this is just a quick overview of the revenue and expenditure projection at status quo. I may not have been clear that time, so city manager requested I just go through it really quick. Status quo meaning if we didn't have any enhanced revenue, and all that we would be receiving is that additional 500,000 from residual receipts revenue. So we did assume a 2% increase on revenue accounts, and again, netting that 500,000 from, as a result of the 2011 bond defecence. We assumed that all cost of living allowance and merit increases will be implemented, and this is again beginning fiscal year 2021, not 1920. We assume a 4% increase for law enforcement, because past history has shown that this is the average, and a 1% increase for all professional and contractual services. We assumed a 5% increase for pension, and again, absorption of that 150,000 cost of the general, the childcare's fund's share of unfunded accrued liability. This also, this projection also shows that 84,000 going into fiscal year 2021. So this is the original worksheet that we had put on the board two weeks ago. So what we did was modify it so that you could see that this included, again, the residual receipts that we were projecting for each year, assuming a 4%, 4% increase every year because it is still property tax. So if you look at the net, that net, I know it, it just says point one or point two, but that's actually 200,000, so that is the net that we will be receiving, should we not change anything, go with the existing public services that we provide today. So roughly, we would be, yeah, not saving, but having a net positive balance of about 200,000 almost every year.
Wouldn't we have bond defeasement money in there as well?
I'm sorry?
Does that include the defeasing of the bonds?
Yes.
Is that what the additional 500K is?
Yes, just to show how much was actually included in the total revenue line.
Okay.
So that you could see how much we were projecting.
Just another point of clarification.
Mr. Duffy?
Mayor, is, the bond defeasement money is in there already, it's showing as a point one, point two, point one. So we just highlighted that it's, that it's already in there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any further questions on this item? Councilmember Robles?
On the last slide, what I want the council to understand is, without the bond defeasement, we would be in trouble already, because we're spending that, and we have like, in 2021, it'd be 300,000?
200,000.
Yeah, but if you add the 500,000, so, so we, without the bond defeasement, you would have 200,000.
Yes, if, without the bond defecence, if we were to take out the 500, it would be negative. That is correct.
Right, so, so there's 300,000.
Yes.
That's helping balance the budget.
That is correct.
So, because the, the concerns I have, and I'm glad that the mayor brought up the 84,000 that's going to the general fund from childcare. First, we, we had a tussle about whether we should defuse the bonds, and so I, you know, so I wonder if we hadn't had that tussle about defeating the bonds, what financial shape we would be, you know, it, so I just, it's just something that I want the public to understand that we have been operating on a shoestring, and...
And your question is?
Pardon?
And your question is?
Oh, well...
Please.
You know, point of privilege, I think we, this is a budget discussion.
But, okay.
We need to...
Right, right now, we're going to have questions.
Okay.
Then we're going to go to public comment, and then we will come back and you will get a chance to make that point.
Okay, so, so then, so my question was, that we're, we use 300... Okay, so, so then, so my question was, that we use 300,000 of the bond defeesment?
That is correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Robles?
The final question is, we're not obligated to spend that 84,000, I mean, excuse me, the 84,000 for unfunded pension liability is not obligated, it's a policy on our point whether to save it?
That is correct, Councilmember Robles.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Councilmember Allen?
Ms. Fortune, back about three slides, you don't have to turn it back, it's on the expenditure assumptions. Item three is that a 1% increase for professional and contractual services. I know that you had stated that the 4% increase for law enforcement services is the annual expected. Is that 1%, is that the, has that been shown in the past to be the expected, and will that be the expected amount going through in the future?
That will be the expected, because we're going to work towards that goal, but normal increases are normal towards CPI, which is 2, 2 and 1/2 percent.
Exactly, that's what I was thinking, I can't imagine, like, Burt Tech and all the, but this is what we're working towards?
Yes, we try to negotiate with a lot of our contracts, especially when we do have three years or five years.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions at this point? All right, thank you, please continue.
So that concludes my report. Mayor, city council, I'll be happy to answer any more additional questions you may have.
Were you going to go into the enhanced revenue and expense projection?
I'm sorry, I did miss.
Please do.
Oh, yes, so, in addition to status quo, we also thought to provide the base for enhanced revenue. And these projections include increased sales tax, the implementation of a transient occupancy tax, and increased property taxes. This is based on future economic development activity, which the city manager has been pursuing relentlessly. So as a result of that, because of that increased activity, what we also did was project increased additional staffing to support all the activity that will be occurring as a result of all this development. And so we had proposed several positions in several departments. But we would also like to note, these are just all projections, any position approvals always are through council by policy and action. So again, based on that increased staff, we also assumed a 50,000 increase in legal services to support that increased activity. And we also proposed, over a number of years, additional law enforcement, two additional 40-hour sheriff's deputies. And, so proposing all that revenue, proposing that expense, including two additional sheriff deputies, will still net us, and I know this is just a round, but a little over 100,000. So we will still have actually monies that would still be falling to fund balance after increased personnel and enhanced revenue. And this was just showing the difference between, if we stayed at status quo, where a revenue and expense base would be, and the higher one would be with the enhanced revenue and increased expenditure. So showing you again the chart that we normally would show, as a result of the enhanced revenue and expense, we would be showing a very, very healthy general fund. That concludes my report, I will be happy to answer any questions city council may have.
You had the question slide too early, huh? All right, are there any questions? Okay, Councilmember Hesse?
Well, thank you for the report, Ms. Fortune. I want to go all the way back to this proposed merit increase, and where it says you're going to, the cost is going to be, the general fund, 84%, the gas tax fund, 12%, grant funds, 3%, housing authority, 1%. And that's going to give us the $31,611.
That is correct.
Out of the general fund, is any of that money coming from the 28, if we pass the 28 for the merit increases?
At this time, that is not the way we were proposing.
So we're not proposing any 28 money going for us?
No, no, sir.
Because my, because when I was reading this agenda item here, thing that it was part of it, when we had the packet here, and was reviewing, where is the merit increase going to come from? And my concern was, the question is, do we have the money every year for this merit increase? Are we going to be all right for this, if we do approve this? It's not going to be this year, then we can't, we have to find money next year for it?
Yes, so, in our projection, again, because we're going to be receiving that $500,000 in residual revenue, yes, we were proposing the merit increases in 2021. This we included, based on a request, and this is what the projection would be, should city council choose to implement it in fiscal year 1920.
All right, well, if the 28, Rule 28 does pass, and the council approves that, what is that money allocated for?
At this point, because, one, it has not been approved, we have not, it has not been allocated for anything, and that is
I understand, but what was staff's intention for that money to be?
Staff's intention was to use that for sheriff deputy overtime.
Okay, nothing else?
Nothing else, sir.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Duffy?
I'm sorry, just a point of clarification, that we would use the money for whatever the council tells us to use the money for, in the recommendation tonight. So the, we presented to you a budget, and then we have these other discussions. Rule 28 is one of those discussions. One of the actions that you would take is that you would approve Rule 28, and you would give us direction on how to use that money. And that's, and that's just a point of clarification.
Point of clarification to you.
Yes, ma'am.
None of the budget that you have proposed contains any of these additional revenue adjustments that Assistant City Manager Fortune went over. Where do we end with what is in the budget?
Sure, absolutely.
With the proposed, just adjustments? And then, where do we continue beyond that? Where do we end up if any of these other items, such as increase, American increase in those items? What do we end up with as far as fund balance?
Yeah, absolutely. So mayor, if we look at the packet page 58, the items that Ms. Fortune went over initially were in item number one. And item number two is the, there is no funding in the current budget for the Microsoft Surface, the paperless system. There's no funding for the traffic officer, and there's no funding for the merit increases. So if you approve any one of those items, you will need to find a separate revenue stream, or go back into the budget that we proposed, and strike something out and replace it with that.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Councilmember Allen?
I wanted to ask you a question, mayor, is when are we going to begin? Are we going to begin deliberations on this yet, or?
No, we're asking questions for clarification or for further understanding, and then we will go to public comment, and then we will come back and deliberate.
Okay.
Do you have further questions?
No, I just wanted to start deliberating.
Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Robles? You're good, okay. Any further questions at this time? Okay, see none. We'll open it up to public comment. And I know we had a number of email that came in, but they were all very, very scripted. And so I would like to ask the city clerk if you would give a summary and a number of the people who sent in the emails, just a summary of what, what the item was, because a lot of them agreed with each other. So if you would give a summary of what their statement was, and how many people wrote in agreement, that would be great.
Of course. As of June 25th, we received 14 emails from members of the public, who are, and of those, 10 are in favor of the one-time use of Rule 28 funds to fund law enforcement. Those emails were received from Kim Stromwell, Paula Jones, David Sadler, Sandy Sadler, Mark Howard, Jill Cathcart, David Laskowski, SoulLady32@SPglobal.net, Jeremy Briggs, and Nicole Littlefield. Hers came in after the agenda, after we were printed. Members of the public who are in favor of passing the budget and the one-time use of Rule 28 funds to fund law enforcement are Brian Pope, Stephanie Sadler, Daryl Bruhl, and Kelly Bruhl.
All right, thank you. And do we have requests to speak during this time? Thank you. Johan Gallo?
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Johan Gallo, 22808 DeSoto Street. You know, in the, one of the previous council meetings, we had a lot of discussion about taking the funds to shift the money from the electronic vaults to West Hollywood, and then to get the 110,000 for the city in general funds to be used. And I know that Lieutenant Wolf had gone through an extensive research to put together a budget for about $134,000, if my memory serves me right, to get an additional 40-hour sheriff year and some additional coverage. And now we see all this other stuff being added, that the city is considering, and I realize it's just a recommendation, but my recommendation is that we stay to the fold on what we said we were going to do. We said we were going to look for additional funding for the sheriff's department, so we have adequate coverage for not only additional sheriff, but for also traffic control. And now I see all these other items, and it's no different than when I deal with Sacramento and deal through 500 pages, just to find something buried, and then it doesn't get us where we need to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Edward Giroux?
My name is Ed Giroux, I live on Vivian and Grand Terrace, California, and for full disclosure, I'm also on the planning commission, one of the committee members. Two things I would like to talk about today. Number one is 28, I would like to see those funds generously given over to the sheriff's department. I think we owe it to the sheriff's department and the deputies that serve this community that they have a backup when they're here needing some assistance with whatever the needs may be. I know Loma London Colton is more than willing to come here, but it's nice having your own brother have your back. The second thing I'd like to talk about, in small communities, when you have a traffic officer assigned specifically for traffic, there's usually some specific incidences that are bringing the arise. Is, I apologize, because I missed the last meeting when this was discussed, is there stuff going on in the city that arises to the position that we need to have a traffic officer? Such as, what is the accident history for this community per miles driven? What are the conflicts between pedestrians, cell phone usage, all this other stuff that goes on to justify the use of a traffic officer? Has there been a traffic study done to support this? I guess not?
This is your time to speak, sir.
Oh, well, I was asking a question if
This is your time to speak. We can come back later, when, when we come back to council, and we'll make sure that your questions are addressed. Thank you.
Well, the questions that I need, I would like to know before we spend $24,000, there are funds available through grants for specific things for traffic that can be obtained if the city can prove the reasons why you need to have this in small communities that don't have a budget for a full-time traffic officer. And that's my question, I don't know why we're asking for a traffic officer when there's been no discussion for the need, or what would be the use for this traffic officer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giroux. Mr. Dan Flores, senior?
Good evening, mayor, good evening, council members. I'll make this just short and sweet. If we do get these funds from Rule 28, the 110,000, my wife and I would like to see the funds go to law enforcement. Where exactly they go, you know, I don't know, but I would like to see it to go to law enforcement, and we believe that this would be a benefit to the people of Grand Terrace. So hopefully you'll vote on the funds, and hopefully, council will get together and decide to use those funds for law enforcement. I think that's very important for us. We plan to stay here in Grand Terrace for many more years, both of us now retired, and I'd like to see the city be more safe. And this is one of the reasons we moved here 25 years ago, was because we thought it was one of the safest cities in San Antonio County, and as I still remember correctly, it still is one of the safest cities. So I'd like to see it continue to do that way, and if we can use these funds for law enforcement, I think it'd be great. So I vote for it to go to the law enforcement.
Thank you, Mr. Flores.
You're welcome.
Lisa Wadley?
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Lisa Wadley, and I live on Devery Street. I also want to talk about the allocation for 28 funds. I want to make sure that I understand, we're planning on spending 55 cents on the dollar for a fund that we're not likely to use, for a total of 110,000. One proposal is to use the one-time money to rent an additional officer for maybe like nine months. I'm guessing that's what that amount of money will cover. Everyone wants law enforcement, I get that, but short-term law enforcement? We're using this money on a reoccurring expense with no plan on how to pay for it going forward. It's the equivalent of throwing a nice party or renting a nice car, fun while it lasts, but no real benefit afterwards. I've heard we'll find the money to fund it afterwards. How? We haven't done it yet. New taxes, more fees, public safety costs are not going down, what's the plan? You know what else isn't going down, is our pension liability. I understand as of June 2018, we're over 6.2 million in unfunded pension liability. CalPERS debit is like a credit card with a variable interest rate that never goes down. We wouldn't want to use that money to strengthen our financial position in these uncertain times, or blow it on another party, or a temporary fix. Our net pension liability continues to increase year after year, and yet we're looking at taking this money, the 28 rule, to pay for maybe nine months of a new toy, instead of paying off debt and saving money in the long run. Yes, we do need additional law enforcement, I do agree with that, but this isn't the way to achieve it, it is a temporary Band-Aid that eventually will need to be replaced. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wadley. Bobby K. Forbes?
Bobby Forbes, Burns Avenue, Grand Terrace. Everyone knows I want more sheriffs, and I'm willing to pay monthly, I'm willing to pay, I'll give you a donation, whatever it is, to make something happen. It's the staff and the council's duties representing us to put something together that will work for us. You all live here. We need more coverage, and a traffic cop would help. I don't know if that's the answer, but certainly having police presence would slow people down and maybe keep some of the bad guys out. So I don't know if this is the best way to do it, but I know that we need someone here, and more services, if they're available through a grant. Mr. Ed Giroux is familiar with the highway patrol and things that can happen maybe that somebody else didn't know about? This is the first I've heard this? Maybe it's been discussed and I missed it? But let's investigate that. We all know there's issues here in town with the traffic, besides the roads and the people running the stop signs, and just little incidences with crime in Grand Terrace, but something needs to change here for our community, for our values of our homes, and for our livelihood. And it's going to be something that will start being rumors outside of Grand Terrace too, if we don't get a handle on it. People ask me all the time, well, what goes on in Grand Terrace? Is there crime? What kind of crime? What, what happens there? Will my property maintain the value because of that happening? So this is really important for our community, and I just ask you to continue to bring this up. If you don't find the solution tonight, please continue to bring this up, and let's get some more police here so that they have a better day at work too, not just us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Megan Moiskai? Megan Moskew. I'm pretty sure I pronounced your last name wrong, so please correct me.
It's okay. Everybody does. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's Megan Moskew.
Moskew. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm the program coordinator at the Grand Terrace Senior Center. So I'd like to show my support for the increase in hours for our bus driver. I'd also like to do a little shout-out for our seniors who made it out here tonight, who use our bus, taking time out of their day. They benefit greatly from our Blue Mountain Silver Liner. So the Blue Mountain Silver Liner is an invaluable service that is provided to our seniors. The bus will pick up the seniors at their home, if they live in Grand Terrace, and takes them to the Grand Terrace Senior Center daily. We provide daily bus trips that include, but are not limited to, Stater Brothers, the bank, the post office, the library, Walmart, the mall, and the pharmacy. After the daily trip, the bus driver will bring back the participants. Those are mostly our trips that are made out of necessity, so groceries and medicine to make sure that the seniors who don't have transportation are able to get those necessities that they have or that they need. So then we actually come back for lunch. We serve lunch every day, 11:30 to 12:30. This is a free lunch program provided by FSA. We try to schedule these trips so that the seniors don't have to choose between going to the store and having a meal. What happens is, because she only works for four hours out of the day where we're actually able to provide a service, it kind of cuts our time short where the seniors also like to enjoy trips, like the movies, dinner trips to local restaurants here in Grand Terrace, which we've been doing recently, and they really enjoy museums. Also, we do the Redlands Bowl when it comes summertime. And also up and coming are the summer programs that the Boys and Girls Club are hosting at the pools, which is something we'd like to integrate if we're able to have these hours increased. The overall goal of the Senior Center is to increase senior participation by providing necessary services, including isolation prevention, programming, and the daily lunch program. I'm hoping that we do have this increase because it's something that benefits our seniors. And we're really hoping, instead of as of right now, having one trip a day, we'd be able to fit in two trips a day without asking our seniors to choose between lunch, a trip to the grocery store, a trip to the movies, or just being at the center. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moskew. Pat Balenzuela. We can bring a microphone up to you.
My name is Pat Balenzuela. I've lived here in Grand Terrace for four years and then previous to that over 25 years. I just came to, in support of allocation of funds for sheriffs. I have several family members who work for the Sheriff's Department, including a nephew who patrolled up here for four years. Back in the day, when it was a nice, quiet place, he said it was boring. He didn't want to be here because he wanted action. So he transferred out of here. But I don't see that, those days here anymore. I don't see those times. I hear sirens all night long. I've seen incidents where my son, who is also a deputy, was off duty and happened to be in the area. And I called him because someone tried to run me off the road waiting for him and the deputy that we called to come out. I saw a drug transaction going down in front of Autozone. I've seen drug transactions going on in the old Stater Brothers parking lot. I've witnessed a lot of things. But I am here to definitely support the allocation of funds for more deputies. We need them. We don't have that peace and quiet that we used to have 10 years ago when my nephew patrolled here. So I totally support that, and I hope Mayor and council members are also going to vote for allocation of funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Balenzuela. We have Merlene Golightly.
My name is Merlene Golightly. I live in the Blue Mountain Senior Villa. Jackie, most of the time, is our only transportation. And we're talking people who are 70, 80 years old. And she comes at 10 o'clock in the morning and usually takes us wherever we need to go. To get your prescriptions at the drugstore, to go to the grocery store, whatever you need, Jackie is very accommodating to all of us. And the thing of it is, if she could get to us an hour earlier, that way we could get to the grocery store. She could get back by about 10:30 and go and pick up people who like to come and have lunch. But if we go at 10 o'clock, we don't get back in time for lunch. And these people miss their lunch. And when we go to the grocery store, usually the bus is very loaded. It's completely full. And Jackie will never let us take our bags off the bus. She carries them because she knows we cannot do it anymore. I mean, I'm standing here right now, but I'm 86 years old. Believe me, I need all of the help I can get. And Jackie is one fantastic person. And if she could get there a little earlier for us, and then she could have lunch, and then take us on an afternoon trip, a lot of time, these people, this is the only entertainment they get. And this helps them get out, see a few things. There is so much we could do here in Grand Terrace if we had the transportation. And if you guys would give Jackie a little bit more time, we would certainly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Golightly. And that is my last request to speak, so we will close public comment. And I know we want to deliberate, but Mr. Ed Giroux did ask a question about the justification of a traffic officer. So, Mr. Duffy, do we have anything to support the need for that?
We do not have a traffic study completed. We would have to go through and do an analysis and work with actually the Sheriff's Department to look at. You know, we do have certain traffic issues certain times of the year in terms of when school starts and after school and things like that. But in terms of identifying how the traffic patrol will be used, that would be left up to the Sheriff's Department to actually implement that.
All right. Thank you. So I will come back to Councilmember Robles, who has graciously gone with our rule of asking questions and then coming back for deliberations. You were talking about defeesment of bonds. So I would like to invite you to continue with your expression on that item.
What I was trying to get the community to understand is absent redevelopment agency funds that were taken away in 2011, the city hasn't had a way of dipping into money to supplement what the tax base doesn't provide. And so I wanted the numbers to show... We should wait a minute.
Mr. Duffy.
I'm sorry, because they have to get back to the Senior Center. So if you want to, they're not being disrespectful. They just have to get back to the Senior Center at 7 o'clock. It's past their time. So if you want to just wait a second.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you to the seniors for making the trip out here. We appreciate your attendance here. And actually, while I'm on that subject, I'm going to say thank you to all of you who came to speak tonight. We appreciate your coming and spending the time and expressing your opinion on what we have before us. And we are almost ready.
There'd be more money.
Okay. One more time, Councilmember Robles.
Okay, so we could put the screen back up. We're showing the new revenue. Now, for, so for the budget that we're considering today, we have $500,000 in new money, but we're only going to recognize, we're only going to receive this year.
$210,000.
$210,000.
That is our projection. Yes.
Okay, so then in the programming, what are we left with after you program it in 2021?
After 2021, we would be left with $200,000.
Okay, so $300,000 in new money is gone. Is absorbed in our needs.
Yes, $300,000 of that residual, yes, is being used in our expenditures.
Okay, so then the other question then in having to do with the childcare money. Now, for a number, even before I was on and during the time that I was on, I was a little bit frustrated because staff never brought up any issue about the unfunded liability that the childcare agency was accruing. It was when it was brought up from the dais that the only issue that was brought up to us was the childcare fees were not meeting the cost. And we were carrying in the general fund the childcare center cost. So the council was alerted to that, and we acted proactively to say we need to recognize that. So then we also sold the building. Okay, so we did say we wanted to recognize paying back the general fund, of course, and also chipping away at the unfunded pension liability. But what I didn't see until today is that there's $84,450 that is going to the general fund. So where is that being eaten up? Is that being considered in today's revenue? No?
No.
So that's money that we could look at? Okay.
That is correct. Councilmember Robles.
And then the final question is, well, two. So we have proposed merit increases, but we're also asking for a fringe benefit increase. And, you know, I'm just a little, I thought, you know, that when you're talking about merit increases, I thought there'd be a discussion about what they earn now, what their, I have no idea what their fringe benefits are, and I'm being asked to increase them.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes. So the proposed budget that we provided to council was for the cafeteria plan. During the discussion, there was a discussion about the council looking at the formal policy that was adopted. And there was a budget policy every year regarding the merit step increases. So that's when we brought the item back for the council to discuss.
But I don't know what, I don't know if $100 is more. I don't even know what they're getting.
For the merit step?
No, for, I don't know.
For the cafeteria.
For the cafeteria plan. Okay. So, and Ms. Fortune can elaborate on this, but every employee's cafeteria plan is $500 per month.
Okay, and what do they get for medical, dental, vision, insurance?
Okay. So what the employee would get is that the city has $645 for the employee to choose a medical plan. And then the cafeteria, and that basically covers the cost for the single employee. If the employee wants to add his family, they can then use the cafeteria money to pay a component of that. It also, they can also use it for eye and for vision and also for...
What, okay, so $645 is for medical? Okay, and the cafeteria plan is an additional 500 now?
That is correct.
And you want to move it to 600?
That's correct.
So, see, without any numbers, I don't know what's fair, but seems like $1,345 is quite generous to, you know. I don't, but I don't have any numbers to show me how that measures up.
Okay. In terms of their benefit costs, the medical plus the $500. So what we're doing is we're increasing that cafeteria monthly plan by that $100 a month. So that would be the increase, if you want to look at that, was that, is that 20% increase or?
But it doesn't matter. I don't know what, I don't know what like cities pay their employees in healthcare or cafeteria plan. So I don't know how to increase something if I don't know how it compares.
Okay.
Well, and then let me just move on. So in this discussion, we also have a discussion on crime. So we've had workshops, and the resident says crime's up, and then we're told that crime isn't up. So is crime up?
Lieutenant Wolf.
Doug Wolf, Sheriff's Department. Well, crime is, it is up, but it's not. Grand Terrace is still a safe place to live. It is one of the safer communities in the inland empire. But everywhere, there has seen an uptick in crime, not just specifically Grand Terrace. We just had recently our annual report come out, which documented that, which I'll be sharing with, I think the city manager may already have it, but, or may have been emailed to you guys. But it does kind of show a slight uptick.
And what types of crime?
Well, I don't have it with me, but I can get that information for you.
Okay. And then I'm going to end with this. We were presented, well, what do the citizens want? I mean, the mayor's and council executive forum, they says, you know, when you're elected, you have to represent all the people, not just the people that come to the meeting or post on social media. So, and then so was the thing, well, how do you know those things? Well, you know, a survey. Well, surveys, the prices that we were given were more than the council wanted to bear. So we really don't know, you know, how people feel about raising taxes or spending money on the sheriff's thing. And I would just say, most other cities, you know, use surveys as some kind of tool to measure that. So, Kate, and I'll you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to tell Councilmember Robles, the way I understand it is with the cafeteria plan and, or the one, because I understand, the way I understand it, and I like what we're offering because it doesn't affect our, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. or Ms. City Manager, but it doesn't affect our CalPERS liabilities. And yet, see, because our employees have gone a long, long, long time, and they've been very patient and understanding with our situation here. And if we can, you know, I'd like us to consider this, if we can, you know, because this is a little bit that can help.
Yeah, but my question was, what do other cities get? So it isn't whether, because throughout my term here, I've always wanted to take care of the employees. But what I've never gotten is any numbers about how we compare to other cities with what we give them.
And Councilmember Robles, I can provide a detail to council. I'm sorry, to council after that. But for, just from past experience, the other cities that I've had would range from $15,000 to $20,000. And then you'd have to buy your benefits as we do here. So our $645 plus 500 is about $14,940. Prior to this fixed amount, this city was actually offering 18% of your salary. That's what the cafeteria plan was. And I think it was just as everybody's salary range, the higher your salary, the bigger your cafeteria plan. So to put that at a fixed amount, this is what they looked at, made sure no one was going to suffer any loss, and we adjusted that and make it a fixed amount. And it's currently at this $14,900.
Councilmember Hesse.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple comments. Councilmember Allen mentioned about the funded liability. So if we do the merit increase, we'll increase another funded liability, correct?
That is correct.
As far as the traffic goes, it was brought, every time when I'm out somewhere, I hear about the traffic. We had a gentleman, Mr. Smith, when we had our budget workshop. And that poor guy, you know, he had a cane and everything. And he waited in those hard chairs, and he wanted to talk about traffic. So that was the benefit, you know, why the traffic was brought up. I walk a lot. I know the mayor walks, too. And even the last council meeting, as I was walking after the meeting, I'm out burning, I'm seeing semis fly through. They're not doing 40 miles an hour. after the meeting on Mount Vernon, I'm seeing semis fly through, they're not doing forty miles an hour. The stop signs are a suggestion, they're more like a yield. People are almost getting hit by it. We're having kids cross these streets in the middle school. And we used to have, Grand Terrace used to have a sheriff sitting right there, and that's the only way people obeyed laws. And we got a lot of thorough through traffic coming in here from High Grove because the freeway's been construction. I mean, they fly up Maestri all the time, I'm yelling at them. I like to have a spike strip down there to slow them down, but I can't. They go up Observation. We have signs, people don't read the signs. The only way the signs are taken serious is somebody pulls them over. That's new stop sign up here, that's a stop and go sign. They don't even stop at that, and I walk by that all the time. So I, first time I heard about traffic study, but, I mean, I carry a camera with me because if I get hit, at least my wife knows who ran over me and stuff, you know, videotape me, you know, walking. So that's my comment on that. That's why the traffic issue was brought up. And the traffic issue was also brought up for additional coverage, just in case we don't get additional forty hours sheriff, if we could at least get an additional traffic officer to cover that. So that was another thing to cover us on that issue. So that was another reason why it was brought up, because, you know, middle school, we had that special safe program, drive, safe program thing, and it's crazy. You know, everybody thinks, you know, their kid's got to get dropped off right in front of the door instead of walking two blocks. But it's nuts out there, and the traffic issue is crazy. And we can't enforce the semis going down the hill, Mount Vernon Hill, and that's just going to keep on eroding our hill, eroding our streets, and we're limited budget. I mean, we're going to keep on, you know, we have a sign there, but once again, they look at the sign and just laugh at it. So we don't have anybody to enforce that because our officers are busy, and they, and if they see something, they'll do it, but, you know, we're asking a lot of our officers on what very little resources they have. The 20A money, you know, the council was, gave Mr. Duffy direction to find one-time use money to try to support the sheriff. You know, we're trying to do long-term thing, you know, we know it's not going to get voted into taxes, you know. You know, we put our neck out on there, some of us, and we knew it wasn't going to happen, you know, but, you know, we're trying, we listen to residents and what they want, and then when you do stuff, and then you get condemned. So it's a life preserver for our sheriffs for another year. Mr. Duffy has found money for us for the last couple of years, so now we're trying to find it again, until we have a proposal here where, in the future, we could have the additional sheriffs. That's if everything goes right, you know, the economy's still going, everything's hunky-dory, you know. And, you know, and I know Ms. Robles, when we brought, you know, she's a strong advocate of defusing that bond, and we had a fight to defuse that, so we could get that five hundred thousand, because that was a good thing that we had to look forward to, getting that money. And, you know, thank God we have that and it's going, because it was just sitting there. You know, I read an old article that somebody got mad at our prior mayor because the RDA money, you know, we killed the golden goose. Well, you know, when you keep getting money, you got to pay it back. And on the council, we, numerous times, we're trying to pay back stuff, we're trying to pay back, you know, we paid back City Hall, we're trying to bring back our online file liability. We're conservative, but my thing is, the traffic thing, the traffic's terrible. I think one of the biggest break-in-the-laws is when we have speeders and people running stop signs, and it's been proven, when we had additional officer, when he pulls over a traffic violation, that that person's more than a violation. They have guns, they have drugs, they're parole violations, they're wanted, they have warrants for their arrests, numerous other things. Am I correct? So there's a big, big domino effect on pulling somebody over. And when we're limited our resources on that, and then we can't get the bite out of crime that we need. So I would like to see this, as the residents came up, because they talked about it, you know, and it's nice to have a survey, but I think even Mr. Allen brought up one time, I hate telemarketers calling all the time, I ignore them. I don't want to have somebody call me, because what's the first thing he says? Well, I'm calling for a survey. A survey for what? Well, if you want a different credit card. No, I don't want a different credit card, it's not a survey, because you're on my do not call list. So us councilmembers, we go shopping, we walk, we have community meetings, we're out there in community events, and time after time after time after time, I hear about law enforcement, I'm sure there are other councilmembers here, and I hear about the traffic, and I hear about the safe streets, and how Grand Terrace isn't safe anymore. Crime has gone up, we had a murder this year, so we're up a hundred percent on murders, you know. So crime has gone up, it's always better to be proactive than reactive, and I think we need to be proactive on this and have another sheriff for forty hours, not only to protect our citizens, protect their quality of life, but also protect their men and women who are behind that badge, so they could get home to their family. Because when you wait five minutes for backup, five minutes is forever. I worked in a prison, you're in the units by yourself, one hundred and sixty inmates, they're not locked down every day, and you're calling, there's a fight, and there's one hundred and sixty guys that hate you because you have a uniform on, and you're fighting them. And alls you have is your keys, your handcuff, and a little thing of pepper spray, two ounces. And that doesn't go very far when there's one hundred and sixty guys. You know, they don't come lining up and say, okay, it's my turn to be sprayed. No, you're fighting and fighting and fighting until the cavalry comes. And it takes a long time for the cavalry to come. And we can't keep on relying on Loma Linda for the cavalry. We need to protect our people. So I would like the council to think about and recommend and use the 20A fund for a one-time fee, and those other fees for the, that the mayor brought up, as a good point about the eighty-five thousand dollars, if we have the other resources, use that. Now, the merit promotion thing, if we're giving a cafeteria fund, if they don't spend all the money in the cafeteria fund, do they get to keep that cash?
That is correct.
Okay, that's a good benefit. So I think we forego the merit promotion thing, because we're already giving them a cafeteria fund. We have taken care of our staff here, we gave them the forty hours, and we gave them a big pay raise, and we can only do a little at a time on the steps on that. So that's my recommendation, is the 20A fund be utilized only for law enforcement only, look at that eighty-five thousand dollars for the other things that we have, and definitely the senior bus transportation, we need to take care of our seniors. And, you know, they were coming out here, as Mr. Allen said the last time, when people come out here to show their support, we got to listen to the residents, and they came out here to show their support. We had people come out here to show their support for the 20A, they wrote emails, you know, they're asking me about it. So we work for the residents, and we need to listen to them. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hesse. Mayor Protem, did you have something you'd like to say? All right, before Councilmember Allen, I'd like to say a few things. And one of them is the Rule 20A money is not free money, it is money that is designated for us to do undergrounding. I don't really, really want to take fifty-five cents on the dollar against something that can be used as an economic development tool. And when we looked at our projected ten-year with our economic development, that gets us even more money. So, points made by Councilmember Robles is that we have more money coming because of our defusement of bonds. I look at the forty-four thousand, two hundred for the traffic officer, and I say, if we add the eighty-four, four fifty to that from our sale of the childcare center, we have a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars that could be put towards our overtime budget for the sheriff. That gets us into next budget cycle, where we have a little bit more breathing room. And I'd much rather do that than spend one-time money for something that was allocated for undergrounding of utilities, which is a safety factor as well. As far as the iPads, I can forego that until next budget cycle, because I think, I think it's a good idea, and I think it saves us money, but I think we're tight this budget, and I'd rather not push for that particular expenditure. I think it's a good idea, and I think it needs to be brought back. But at this time, I would rather, I would rather do some of the other ones, like the traffic officer with the, with the combination of the childcare center additional funds to get us into next year as well. And I like the other proposed budget adjustments, and I say that, that if we do the cafeteria plan increase, that we then look at merit increases again next budget cycle, when we have a little bit more breathing room. And those would just be my suggestions. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. I remember that we were, we're supposed to get an undergrounding plan, is that correct?
Yes, we are.
Have, do we have that yet?
We don't, and I believe that's probably why we have not used those funds, because we have never had a plan.
Because I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to use the funds up and then get a plan that says, hey, you know, if you've got the funds, you can do this. And I know that down the road, we're wanting, I believe we're wanting to make, isn't there a plan that, for us to have our commercial area more walker, walking friendly, more pedestrian friendly? And one of those is to, you know, like, so I understand what you're saying there with the undergrounding. I, I think that the bus driver position is really important. If we are, if we can add any, it's pretty obvious that it's a, something that can be a big benefit to a group of our residents. And so I'd like for that to be considered. I'm a little bit concerned, though, about using that eighty-four K from the childcare fund, because next year, we're going to have the, we're going to be faced with the annual unfunded liability, a hundred and fifty thousand that we're going to have to come up with. Now, you had said we're going to have a little bit less, a little bit more breathing room, and I'd like to know, how do you, okay, well...
No, this is the ten-year status quo, and so this gives us money from the defusement of the bonds. So if nothing else happens, we have, we will recognize the five hundred thousand additional.
Because I had also thought about using that, if we could use that eighty-four K for anything other than just the unfunded liability, saving it for that. And I had actually thought that that might be a good source to pay the extra pay for the bus driver to come out of that.
I think that's...
If we can't find it from anywhere else.
That, is that part of the detailed expenditure adjustments that were recommended?
The additional hours for the bus driver, yes.
Okay.
And so I did, I did forget to mention, I'm in support of that. I'm in support of, of the expenditure adjustments that council suggested, and then looking at the other adjustments that would be over and above that, though.
What page are you on?
Well, now I'm going to the...
Because if, you know, the, they would, you could also cover merit increases and then add the balance to get more law enforcement.
That's true.
If, you know, or a cost of living increase for the employees, but...
So the traffic officer of the twenty-four thousand is over and above, where would that money come from?
They're probably asking us that same thing.
So do we have to choose something that we don't want to fund if we choose, if we fund the traffic officer at twenty-four thousand?
You would, Mayor. If that's the only item that you're going to fund, I would just request that you would give me a few minutes to kind of confer with Ms. Fortune. We have been scrubbing the budget, anticipating this meeting. And so what I really need to know is what your, what you guys would like, would like to do. And then I could just huddle for a second with Ms. Fortune to kind of go through what we, what we found to be able to come up with this. But certainly, it stands right now, the items that you have listed on here, if you support any of these, you'd have to come back through the budget and undo something.
Okay. Councilmember Robles?
Any of the one, two, four?
On two, so, on the recommendations of the, on the staff report on page fifty-eight, so the Microsoft...
Which page, which fifty?
Packet page fifty.
Packet page fifty-eight.
And this is why I want iPads. All right.
Mr. Duffy, go ahead and walk us through that.
So if you wanted the iPads, then you would have to go into the recommended changes and make that adjustment, reducing something for fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars. If you want the twenty-four thousand dollars for the traffic officer, you'd have to do the same thing. If you wanted the merit increases, you'd have to do the same thing. But what I'm just requesting is, if you would just tell me exactly what you guys are supporting, then I can, I can go back to the, to what we presented to you and show you what we have gone through the budget to say, here's how we propose your solution, or we can't propose that solution, find that solution. For example, if you want to use the eighty-four thousand dollars, that, that would be a solution. But one of the things that you do with that solution is you will have adopted a budget that would not be deemed a balanced budget because you're using fund balance. And so it's a, it's a minor issue, but if, if your direction is to put that eighty-four thousand dollars into the general fund and not hold it for the childcare liability, you can always come back to that money and, and use that at any point, at any point in time.
Councilmember Robles?
I have two questions, okay. Number, number one, there is no plan to deal with the unfunded pension liability at this time?
At the state level?
No, here.
Oh, here.
Because we have general employees that have an unfunded pension liability, and there's been no discussion about that.
Well, no, we actually have, we have a dollar amount which the, which the state provides to us.
Where is it here to deal with it?
So...
Assistant City Manager?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Robles is asking our total unfunded liability?
No, asking where is it in this proposed budget to start paying down general fund pension liability?
I, I do not have to start paying it down. What I have is to pay the minimum annual required contribution.
So, so what I'm trying to get to, for the public to understand, and for Councilman Allen to understand, the only reason we address the childcare unfunded pension liability was because we had a windfall of selling the childcare facility. So we said it would be prudent to deal with this. But we, we don't have a strategy yet to deal with the unfunded liability other than what were required by cowper's to expend annually. We're not accelerating it, we're not talking about, you know, in five years, getting rid of it.
Mr. Duffy?
But what you do have is, you, you have, as Ms. Fortune said, the minimum payment that you have to make. And the minimum payment that you have to make is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And because you have that windfall, and you still have the childcare fund, when you close out the childcare fund, the hundred and fifty thousand dollar minimum payment becomes a responsibility of the general fund. And, and so the eighty-four thousand dollars that you have right now means that the general fund would only have to pay the difference between one fifty and eighty-four thousand dollars. And so if you use that eighty-four thousand dollars for something else, the general fund will have to pay its share and also the new, now the employees are...
Okay, let me interrupt you there.
Councilmember Robles?
There was no concern ever in three years, when we were running a deficit in the childcare center, to say, hey, council, and by the way, you're racking up an unfunded pension liability. I had to look at the numbers and question it, and I took a lot of flak from the community for saying, we can't afford to pay out of the general fund for your daycare. Yes, okay, so let me finish. The other thing too, to get five hundred thousand, you know, we're paying one point six million dollars in interest payments for funds that in RDA, that we've known since two thousand and eleven, we can't spend. So it's difficult for you to sorta tell me, you must understand you have these liabilities, when I've been very proactive in not wasting millions in interest payments on RDA money that we could be using to deal with our, our financial instability, you know, because two months reserves is, and nothing for capital improvements or, or maintenance, you know, and people come and say, you know, you're wasting our tax money, you know, and you want to buy iPads when we can have sheriff services. This is the, the kind of thing that I'm trying to say. And then I come here, and it's like, wait a minute, there's eighty-four thousand that we're not giving, we know that, that we, we said, let's address this childcare thing, that for three years, nobody said, we have a problem. So my thing is, if we have eighty-four one thousand that we can spend now, and so I'll get to my priorities so I cannot hog this up, I'd like to see a bus driver, the software licensing, and the iPads, and possibly not, and not do the benefit increases, do the cost of... iPads, and possibly not, and not do the benefit increases, do the, the cost of living, don't do the benefit allowance, and use that benefit allowance for the traffic cop, and then we'll come back in January to have the bigger discussion about midterm, how we can address the sheriff's issue with the growth that we're going to be anticipating.
So, Mayor?
I'm looking to understand the difference between the, the overall cost of the benefit versus the overall cost of the merit increase. Assistant City Manager?
Mayor, was that a question?
Yeah, if we're trading, the, okay, I just think I found an increase, okay, an increase in benefit allowance for the employees, I understand is 24,000, and what was the bottom line for the merit increase?
31,000.
31,000.
31, 26 to the general fund.
Okay, okay, that's right. All right, thank you. All right, so, Mayor Protem, you are saying?
I'm not Mayor Protem.
You're, you're right, you're not, and I wasn't asking you. But Councilmember Robles, now that you brought it up, okay, so, you are in support of increased dri, uh, bus driver, correct? Accounting position?
Um, I'll, oh, I don't know where to leave it.
That's the 44,200, that's to make up for the annuitant that is leaving.
If it's in there, I-
Yeah, it's, it's under there, okay. Annual software licensing for live pension, accrued liability tracking, and, and then instead of the increased benefit allowance, you would say, let's do merit increase instead?
No.
No, you're saying-
Traffic, the traffic cop.
Do traffic and cop, traffic cop instead of the benefit allowance?
Yeah, because I don't know where they have that, the 31,000 must just be in that salaries.
No, 31,000 is the merit increase versus the-
It was this one.
The cafeteria plan is-
This is, you know, it's, it's this one. Okay, so where is that in your budget?
Yeah, see, I don't, I don't see that either, but-
Yeah, I mean, this is-
I don't even see that on the front page.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so I'm understanding that, you're saying increased?
So why don't we do-
On packet page 62?
Oh, okay, but I thought you, like, the cost of living, no, that's the 24,000 for the benefit allowance.
That's, yes, that's the benefit allowance versus the-
The merit increase is on what page?
It's in salaries, because it's not in-
Yeah, that, that, that was a part of the deliberations in the discussion, so it, it's on, on, one of the recommendations-
It's, it-
On packet page 58. It's D.
Oh, I see, okay.
Which, oh, okay, 58, very beginning.
Okay.
Okay, but you know, it doesn't really make sense in how this is presented.
It's, it's a little difficult to-
It's convoluted.
It's a little difficult to go through, okay, so, I understand, I understand what you're saying.
Well, we didn't, we didn't recommend that.
Councilmember Allen?
Um-
Your recommendations are what?
Oh, I, I was just, the orders that I would like to see then is number two, the finance department, I would make that my highest priority, because I think we need a budget officer, principal accountant, and then the bus driver, and software licensing.
Okay, and then as far as the benefit allowance for employees?
So I was gonna ask a question, I heard recent, I heard Mr. Duffy say, I mean, not Mr. Duffy, Mr. Hussey say, and Mr. Duffy confirmed it, that merit adjustments affect our pension benefits, do COLA also?
Merit adjustments do, but the, but the benefit allowance does not.
Right, so COLA is a merit adjustment, part of the merit, so, yeah.
COLA would impact the, the purse, but the, but the, but the benefit allowance would not.
Would not, all right. I'm gonna, I'm just gonna hold off right now on that, those three are-
Okay.
Okay, now, and what did you want to do with the 84,000 from the-
Are you asking me?
Sure.
Oh, it was, you know, I had looked at it, and on the one hand, I know it's important to pay down our debts and be responsible and all that, but I also know, like you said, we're coming in, we're gonna be getting the, the 500,000 starting next year, a little more breathing room, like you described it, and so I, I would be comfortable using the 84, the childcare fund for any of those three items that I mentioned earlier, if it was needed.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm, I'm amenable to listening to everyone else about item four, or, or law enforcement, you know, I'm open to that, but I just, I think those other three are, especially the budget officer and the software license, I mean, it's gonna be a huge benefit to our city and management.
Okay, I'm going to go to Councilmember Hussey, since he hasn't had a chance yet. Councilmember Hussey?
All right, thank you. The 24,000 for the increase, or for the bus driver, the 44,000 for the budget officer, 12,000 for the license, the 24,000 for the increase, but that's already in the budget, correct?
That is correct.
That's not us picking away the 84,000 if we had to, correct?
No.
Because I, I think Mr. Allen's looking at it that way, I don't know if, I'm getting a little confused here. Ms. Robles mentioned that they, we haven't heard anything until today about the childcare unfunded liability, whatever, just like we haven't heard anything until the last month about the, the vault, the electric vaults. I've been coming to council meetings for a long time, and that was all news to me, and it's been sitting there, I still think that's a, a one-time source that we could tap in, I don't think 500,000 is even gonna come close to all the stuff that we need, but I, I, I want the sheriffs, and if we just do the 84,000, that's still not gonna cover for what we need for the overtime, that's only gonna cover a couple months, or, how many months will 84,000 cover?
I'm not sure exactly how much, but I think it was about 134 for the year, it was right around there, so, I would say-
So if we use the 84,000, we would be good until January?
Correct.
All right.
With, with the traffic cop, 24,000?
Well, I'm talking about the 80, the reason why the traffic cop was brought up, because if we didn't approve overtime for the sheriff, that was one of the things, but I'm just, I'm looking at, trying to get the 40-hour week, and then the 40-hour week officer can be utilized as a traffic officer.
That is correct, if we, if we did the 40-hour, additional 40-hour deputy, we would not really need to do the traffic. You probably still give me the latitude of being able to handle some of our traffic complaints throughout the city.
So we would scratch the 24,000 on that?
That's correct.
All right. I just want clarity, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey, Mayor Protem Wilson, you've been quiet.
No, I think we're heading in the right direction in relation to the 84,450, I mean, it funds what we need to do, and if it's, if that is considered our priority, you know, the software thing, we can knock that out, because technically, it also is not our number-one priority, and then with the traffic officer money, we end up with about 121,000, and we still keep our bus situation, 121 grand, pretty darn close to what we were, what our goal was, to be able to make it for this year on, on extra sheriff.
All right, Councilmember Robles?
Okay, on the other underground utilities, I've been asking since I was elected in 2010 about the rule, 12A fund, and I do know from my public sector experience that it takes a long time to get that money together. Now, it's difficult for me when we said to the city manager not to go look for funds, we said, what kinds of developments coming in, and what kinds of revenue in the future can we start capturing? And then I feel I'm broadsided with, hey, here's a, a deal, and this deal is to sell an asset that's very important for half price, to fund something for a short period of time, so, I'm not very amenable to that. The other thing, though, that we keep doing on this council, and it's kind of the culture of, of, of Gran Terrace, is, I'm dealing with all this paper, you know, I get all these things, and what packet page, and this format, you know, you have numbers in one format and another, I'd like to have iPads, they're very inexpensive compared to the staff time that's going into making all these things, can be, be going to something else. We only have one city clerk, and she has to have an assistant, you know, I think it's a feel-good thing to say, oh, wow, let's, it's, let's not spend, you know, the little bit of money on that. If you don't want to have a license for CalPERS, I can be agreeable to that, because right now, we don't have a strategy at all, so when we have a strategy, perhaps we can look at that. I, I don't want to be ticking off my, my train of thought here. So, I think if we look at that 84,000, and you have an idea of, at least a couple of ideas of how we want to spend it, we go on a break, and you come and you show us what that looks like?
Yeah.
I think would be a good idea.
I'm gonna make it, I'm gonna make a motion here, based on what I've been hearing, and I'm gonna motion that we approve resolution 2019, adopting fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget revisions as presented to the city council, with the particular changes in here as described by the staff, that we will do the fully funding of the budget officer, principal accountant, that we will do the annual software license for live pension, that we will use the 24,000 for the, towards the sheriff, that we will use the 84,465, or whatever it is, that's additional from the sale of the childcare facility to also go towards sheriff, and that we will find the money for iPads. That, that's my motion.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, Mr. Duffy?
Yes, Mayor, the 24,000 item that you said that was for, for the traffic, that, that's not a revenue, that's, that's an expense, and, and-
It would not be the budget increase allowance of 24,000, that would instead go to the sheriff. It won't be traffic, because if we add the, the funding from the childcare center to that-
Right, so it's, it's, so you have the revenue of 84,000 that you talked about for the childcare.
Yes.
And so, but the 24,000 is an expense?
Right, no, it's part of this 107 that you have in here.
No, no, it isn't, the, the 24,000 for the, for the sheriff.
I'm looking at page 62.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm being told that you aren't-
I'm, I'm spot on?
Yeah, spot on.
Thank you, I thought I understood this. Now, going back and forth, it does make it difficult, Mr. City Attorney?
Madam Mayor, if, if the council would look at page, packet page 72, this is the attachment to the resolution.
Correct.
The attachment on page 72 identifies what is in the proposed budget if the council were just to approve what staff has, has already recommended, these items, the 26,400 for the bus driver-
Right.
44,200 for the budget officer, principal accountant, the contractual license software of 12,500, and then the benefits of 24,000. I think what the-
Right, and what I'm saying is, instead of the benefits-
Exactly.
At the 24, that would be the, the traffic.
Cop, correct, so you'd be flipping out the, the 24,000 for the benefit allowance for the traffic cop.
Okay, Mr. Duffy?
Okay, so, now that we know what you're proposing, can you just give us just, let's take maybe a seven-minute break?
I would enjoy a seven-minute break.
Why not?
And then we'll come back and deliberate some more.
I, I just don't want one option.
Okay.
All right, we are in recess for seven minutes. Our regular scheduled meeting. What do you have for us?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, so after looking at everything as Mr. Guerra had said, packet page 72 seems to be the easiest, so what we are still proposing are those that are listed here to a total of 107,000, and again, this is already backed by revenue that we are proposing, so as we had all discussed, there's 234,000 in extra proceeds from the childcare fund, we need 150 to pay 1920's unfunded accrued liability, we are recommending that the 84,000 be used towards additional sheriff overtime, in addition to that, we had reviewed our non-departmental, our non-departmental budget item costs, which I'm assuming he had sent to you, we have a line item there, a 15,000 contingency line item-
How about that?
That we could add to, yes, because Councilmember Wilson asked, we could add to that 84,000, and in the last three, four years, much as you were always awarding 20,000 to our community benefits fund, since inception, we've always had a 5,000 savings, so we did the 15, the 5,000 plus the 84, we'll have roughly about 105,000 that we can recommend towards, towards additional law enforcement services.
Okay, so I'm gonna amend my motion.
Okay.
And I will go with your recommendations of the 8450 to law enforcement, keeping intact, as you said, but this 15,000 that's in the-
Non-departmental-
Non-departmental?
Fund, yes.
That could go towards iPads.
Okay, yes.
And then we could come back at mid-year and look if there's additional funding for, to add to the sheriff budget.
We can do that.
I'll second that.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm the maker, and, and I'm amending my motion, so-
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Second, encourage.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, any further discussion on this item?
Can you, can, yes?
Go ahead, Mr. Allen.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I was wondering if you could restate the motion, or-
Absolutely, sure.
Or, what the various-
I will absolutely restate the motion, okay, so I'm approving resolution 2019, adopting fiscal year 2019, 2020, budget revisions as presented by the city council, said budget is structurally balanced and not requiring use of fund balance, although we are gonna end up changing that a little bit. Okay, so that includes the increase in salary and benefit for bus driver, the fully funding the budget officer accounting position, the annual software license fee, and the increase in benefit allowance for the employees, then it also has the other adjustments that they made that are on page 71, and then further use the 84,450 of the proceeds from the childcare center to go towards the sheriff fund for overtime, the 15,000 in-line item of the non-departmental-
Non-departmental, yeah.
Towards iPads, and then add to that, that I'd like to come back at mid-year and, and look at where we can add additional to the sheriff fund. That is my motion, and I believe that is still your second, correct? Okay.
So, you're proposing to use the entire 84,450 for enhanced sheriff's-
Yes.
Services?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor?
Assistant City Manager?
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am, there was also a 5,000 that we were projecting that will not be used in the community benefits fund-
Okay.
If you want to add that to additional sheriff services.
Okay, I can amend my motion to add that 5,000.
Second, encourage.
So, you, you wanna add, I'm sorry, you wanna rec-
Okay, so what we're-
You wanna add five, you wanna move money out of CDBG?
No, no, it's out of our community benefits, which is different than the block grant.
Okay.
So what they're saying is traditionally, we've only spent about 15,000.
Right.
And so, so they're saying if we take that additional 5,000 of the allocated 20, and that would go towards sheriff services, which would bring us up to about- and that would go towards sheriff services, which would bring us up to about $89,450. But yes, it is general fund. So that is my amended amended motion, and the second concurs. And so, further discussion? Did we catch that?
No, no.
All right. So I have a motion and a second, and I'm hearing no more deliberation, and I hear that one of my councilmembers is very pleased with it, so please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNambo voting yes.
Thank you very much. And thank you all for your discussion. We will move on to item number seven of our unfinished business, adoption of an amended resolution setting a public hearing relating to rate increases for solid waste collection, recycling, disposal services, street sweeping services, and special services. Mr. Harold Duffy, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, for the record. General Duffy, City Manager. This is what we're gonna be asking the council to do tonight, is we want you to adopt a resolution rescinding the previous adopted resolution, setting forth a public hearing that was dated for July 9, 2019, and then setting a new date for August 13, 2019, to hear matters pertaining to proposed rate increase for solid waste collections, recycling, and disposal services, street sweeping services, and special services, for August 13, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. in the City Council chamber. Staff will be working with a holler to undertake the appropriate public notification measures for the public hearing. We had a problem with the notification, the mailings at the time, so we had the previous meeting. In addition to that, if you remember, the last time we did this, there was, the hearing was set for July 9, but there was a desire to have the rate retroed back to July 1. We talked with BRTAC, and we indicated that, no, we would, the council would want to move forward and not go back on the date. So what we're gonna be doing is we're resetting the hearing, and any race that the council would approve would take effect on September 1, 2019. So this is just basically setting the hearing for the August 13 date.
Okay. Any questions of staff at this time? All right. We'll open public comment. Is there, are there any requests to speak at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. We'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion and a vote.
Madam, Mayor?
Councilmember Allen?
I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution rescinding the previously adopted resolution and setting forth the public hearing date of July 9, 2019, setting the new date of August 13, 2019, to hear the matters pertaining to the proposed rate increase for solid waste collection, recycling, disposal services, street sweeping services, and special services.
Okay.
Second, plus discussion?
Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Mayor Protem Wilson, and you had discussion, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
It might be helpful for us to understand what the impact is over, since these folks have taken over the contract. Last time they stood before us, they felt like 2017 increase was fair, considering the fact that, you know, they hadn't had an increase for a while. Now, we're two years later, and we're also taking it up another notch. I'm paying too much money for my trash. So, and I understand the whole thing about the Chinese aren't gonna take our trash and all of this, I just, but I'd just like to see a comparison to, you know, how they're accelerating, because this could get to be a racket after a while.
Absolutely. And when we come back for the actual hearing, we'll give you the comparison in terms of how our rates compare to the surrounding cities, and then some ways in which residents can adjust their trash bill by moving to a smaller container and reducing, mitigating the impact of the increased rates.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNambo voting yes.
Thank you. So we will move to item nine of new business. We have our City Council policies and procedures. Mr. Adrian Guerra, City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is item eight regarding consider possible revisions to City Council policies and procedures, and additions of new topics for inclusion in those procedures. This item supports engaging in proactive communication by establishing policies and procedures for meetings of the City Council to promote community participation and promoting orderly meetings. As the council will recall, earlier this year, we discussed putting an agenda item on the agenda, addressing future agenda items. And as part of that action, which the City Council approved, I had recommended that we add that policy back into the procedures, so it was clearly stated. In going through that process, we identified some minor revisions to the policies and procedures, and I have attached those in our exhibit, or Attachment A, in red line, identifying some minor revisions here and there in addition to the future agenda items. But also, in going through this and in hearing from the council over the last few months, I know Councilmember Robles had raised some questions and some suggestions regarding the policies and procedures, and I figured this would be an opportunity to at least set the table for the discussion and get some direction from the council as to whether they wish to pursue further revisions or not. So in Attachment A, the key one that I'm recommending is obviously including the future agenda items into the policies and procedures, and I included that on page 112. That is basically the verbatim language we're using on the agenda. In addition, there's some other minor revisions that I've suggested in red line throughout the Attachment A. One of the interesting areas that we noticed, and this happened a few meetings back, where there were some people making statements from the audience and during a council meeting. And one thought was maybe to look at adding or beefing up our decorum and order, and how we go about ensuring that we have proper decorum during our council meetings. On page 102, for example, we added some suggested language that we could include in the policies and procedures. Again, this is just a suggestion, and happy to take any comments to that. In Attachment B, we found a policy, as you know, I used to be Assistant City Attorney in the City of Bell, obviously after the scandal over there, and helped to rebuild that city. One of the things they did was they established very recent policies and procedures that they use. I attached that only for purposes of comparison and taking a look at some of the issues that they address that are not currently covered in our policies. Some include the procedure for conducting a public hearing, procedures for corrections of actions maybe that the council wants to change, power of subpoenas. And in some other cities, they want a power of censure of council members. I've never seen it, in my 19 years, I've never seen it, but in Bell, they had it. So I put it in there for the council's review, and if they're interested in anything of the sort, that would be great. In Attachment C, I identified, and this was a suggestion from Councilmember Robles, of whether the City Council would be interested in adopting a code of ethics. Many cities do not have codes of ethics. That doesn't mean they're unethical by any means. They just don't have a set policy. But some cities do. And in Attachment C, I identified some samples. Again, this is not the whole universe of samples, but I included some from the cities of Sunnyvale, Riverside, Irvine, Bell, and Santa Clara. I also included a copy of the Institute of Local Government Guidelines for Code of Ethics, so that you could see just more of a model code of ethics that the council may wish to consider. Again, if the council's interested in doing something like this, we could model something off of one of these, or we can do completely our own, whatever the council so chooses. Another item for council deliberation is a duration on City Council meetings. In one of the first cities I worked in was the City of Monterey Park, and in Attachment D, I included a copy of their resolution. In their resolution, they set a time limit on the length of a meeting. Their meeting started at 7:00, if I recall correctly. They set an 11:00 p.m. ending. And, you know, City Manager Duffy had a good suggestion as an alternative, is rather than setting an hour for an ending, specifying a duration of a meeting that not only applies to a regular meeting, but also special council, special council meeting. So for example, rather than setting 11:00 p.m. or 10:00 p.m., you set three hours. And obviously, the council can make a motion to extend that time, but at least, the concept is, at least their belief, was that the later a meeting goes, there's gonna be less public participation, because people are more likely to go home, because it's later. And also, we get tired. We get hungry as decision makers, and so are we making the best decisions at 11:00 at night? In Monterey Park, I actually had meetings going to 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, and that was always a question of, is the council making appropriate decisions at that time?
And are they cranky?
Yes. Yes, they are. At least Monterey Park, they were. So, just another policy suggestion that the council may wish to consider. Lastly, there was a meeting, a few meetings back regarding, the Councilmember Robles had pointed out about our accessible seating and having policies and procedures to address that. Normally, I have not seen, I took a look, I have not seen any specific policies that address that issue. Usually, City Council chambers must comply with the ADA, American Disabilities Act, in terms of providing accessible seating, but in terms of who uses it, I haven't seen anything. That being said, if the council wishes to look into a policy or specify a policy that we want to consider, I'm happy to do that. One suggestion would be to, at the beginning of the meeting, the mayor provides a statement of some general rules for the meeting. One suggestion is to specify at the meeting the statement that we have on our agenda itself. If you require special assistance to participate in the meeting, please call the City Clerk's office at 909 and blah, 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 at least 48 hours prior to the meeting. There's also two ways to look at it. There's the physical issues regarding the setup of the chambers and making sure it's accessible to anybody with a disability. That's one issue. And the other issue is what we call reasonable accommodation, making sure that we provide listening devices for people who are hard of hearing. We do a microphone, which we saw tonight, so it's easier for people to speak from their seat rather than having to come down to the speaker, so things of that sort. There's also, even though it's not a disability, but people with foreign language, having policies and procedures such that if somebody wants to speak Spanish, Chinese, whatever language, that they notify the City Clerk of that, you know, they want to participate, and maybe we have some type of communication device. So, again, this is just a broad discussion. I'm looking tonight not necessarily for definitive action, but for discussion and direction as to what policies, if any, that the council may wish to consider.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Are there any questions at this time? Right. Seeing none, I will ask if there are, I will open public comment and see if there are any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So I'll bring it back for deliberation of this item and discussion. Councilmember Robles?
Well, you know, we got the, or I got the agenda on Friday, so it was, the budget was quite, you know, attention, and this is a lot to take in. What I'd like to do is, Jeff Bills, is that his name, is gonna be helping us on team building? And I thought at one point it was Jeff Bills that was also gonna be helping us on establishing our procedures. I think it's important that we spend time on this. I don't want to burden staff or the council with doing it in the immediate future. I think we can let the summer pass and look at some dates in the fall that we could, those of us that are interested on this body can sit and hammer out some of these things.
Would you like to make a motion on the proposed revisions for the way that we add items to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the attachments A and B.
Actually, just Attachment A.
Just A.
Yeah. Attachment B is the City of Bell.
Okay.
Policy. So Attachment A would have the additional language regarding the future agenda meetings or agenda items, and also some minor revisions here and there, just for clarification. I also included on page, packet page 117, additional language regarding the decorum and order. I don't know if the council wishes to approve that tonight or want to hold off on that.
My understanding, this is pretty much standard practice now?
It is, but...
And since it's standard practice, why not not have it?
Correct. No, no argument from me.
So does your motion include the suggested changes as they are at this time?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to this motion?
I'll second.
Okay. So I have a motion by Councilmember Robles to adopt the revisions as they are stated in Attachment A, and a second by Councilmember Hussey. Any further discussion?
Yes, please.
Okay. Mayor Protem Wilson?
No, I think Councilwoman Robles's point's well-taken. It's 150 pages worth, and it's not easy reading. So to do a proper due diligence on this information, I think I need some, I need some more time.
For the additional beyond the revisions as they are?
All of it.
All of it? Okay. All right. So I have a motion for the revisions and the request to come back with consideration and discussion over the other items, and I have a second, so please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor McNambo voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson votes no.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you. And so we'll have to, we can go through the process of bringing it back, or do you have direction for when to bring it back?
At this point, I have no clear direction on when to bring it back.
Okay.
The fall, if that's the preference of the council. Another option is maybe create a subcommittee to look at it and then bring it back when they're ready. Just an idea.
Can we create a subcommittee in the fall?
Well, we can do a subcommittee now.
Okay. So who would, if we appoint a subcommittee to review this and come back with recommendations, do I have volunteers? I imagine Councilmember Robles wants to be on that. Is there somebody else that would like to join her on that? Mayor Protem, do you want to be part of that?
Mayor, with all due respect, I haven't, I don't know what I'm looking at yet, so...
Well, and it would be going through the items that are there, and it would be determining through discussion with Councilmember Robles what you think should come back to council and what you think should stay as is.
Okay. Well, I'll reserve my position.
So you will be part of that subcommittee? No, thank you. Okay. Is there somebody else that would be like part of that subcommittee? Councilmember Allen?
Well, I'm not sure I want to be, I mean, I'm satisfied with the policies and procedures in place.
Okay.
I'm not, I don't know that I would offer any changes to them.
Okay.
I can go, I would be happy to go over them and just say, because I did read through them briefly, and the revisions, and that's what I support, is there...
Okay, the revisions are where they are, but the Attachment B, where we would get into some of the other code of ethics and those types of things, that's what you'd come back and make recommendations on?
Well, I have an appointment as a county, I'm a county-appointed official, and we do ethics training every two years online, and it's a very easy two-hour thing, and if you want to do it, that's the way we, I think we should do it.
Well, we do that as councilmembers as well.
Yeah. So...
Okay.
I mean, I don't know what, okay.
All right. Councilmember Hussey, would you like to be part of this subcommittee? All right. Councilmember Robles?
Okay. So, Mr. Hussey, if I recall, we had discussions about that you wanted to have some procedures on how we conducted ourselves in the meeting and out in the public. Okay. So this is part of why this has been for a long period of time in discussion. I do see, though, where, you know, if people don't want to spend the time... I do see, though, where, you know, if people don't want to spend the time on it, you know, you can say, well, but there's some things that I'd like to see, that if you guys don't want to review this, I'd like to see some adjustments to our agenda. And a lot of cities have, you know, in their discussions, that the community, when they come and they put on the TV, or they come to a meeting, they're busy, they want to come and have their input. So a number of cities are putting council reports at the end. They also break out between, if you're on committees, your committee report. They also say, you know, if we're going to have the public limited to three minutes, we limit ourselves to three minutes. And also that the minutes only reflect the business of the actions taken, and we could put reports, you know, on the website for a council member, for example, or the mayor, so that the public still has that information. So I think there's some things that we can work on. There's also, you know, we've had some stumbles where, you know, we are always elected officials, and we can only act as a body. Now, if we're going and engaging in the public with other legislators and representing the council, you know, maybe we need to say, well, you know, no, really, that's not the way we do business. So that's why I feel like we need to kind of go through some of this. I don't think it's going to be that difficult.
All right, would you like to review some of this and come back to us, Councilmember Robles?
I can do that.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, and I appreciate you taking that on.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to item nine, which is the June 2019 Award of Community Benefit Funds in the Amount of $2,000. Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Proton, City Council. Before you, again, a review of our community benefit fund is an application from the Friends of the Grand Terrace Library to fund their summer reading program for this summer 2019. As shown in the staff report, we have been funding the summer reading program since 2016. So this will be the fourth year that we would be funding it, and the request is for $2,000. We have also funded a few other items for the Friends of the Library, a makerspace program, and some library and display materials. But from what we have seen and we heard, because they do have all the activities across from City Hall, they are very well-attended. Yeah, it's always full, a lot of children do come and attend these programs. And I know I'm backtracking here, this staff report supports two city goals, ensuring our fiscal viability and developing and implementing successful partnerships, which we have been doing with the Friends of Grand Terrace Library for the last four years. That concludes my report. I will be happy to answer any questions the city council may have.
Thank you for that report. Any questions at this time? Okay, I'll open it up for public comment. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, I'll bring it back for deliberation or consideration of a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the CDB, the Community Benefit Fund Grant Application from the Friends of the Grand Terrace Library and award the grant amount of $2,000 for their 2019 summer reading program.
All right.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Proton Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
All right, we'll move on to item 10, which is Treasurer's Report as of March 31, 2019. Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, again, Mayor, Mayor Proton, City Council. Before you is the city's Quarterly Treasurer's Report as of March 31, 2019. Again, as staff continues to ensure our fiscal viability, this actually provides city council with our cash at a certain point in time, and that was, again, as of March 31. So the city's, the city's cash balance as of March 31, not including this successor agency, was 9.1 million, and the successor agency funds is sitting at 26.7 million. With the approval of the 2011 fund fee sense, I would say that when we come back for our first quarter Treasurer's Report, all of these successor agency funds will no longer be there but minimum, but we will still have, of course, the rest of the city's funds. And as a check, when we look at this, we always test an agency's fiscal stability, and that is shown in Table 4. So what everyone looks at is, should Mother Nature do its worst on this city? Does the city have enough funds to actually cover operating expenditures for at least six months? So since we have 9 million, and our budget is net, net successor agency is 8.7, half of that would be for, almost 4.4 million? So yes, we do have enough to actually cover six months of operations, should all our revenues stop. That concludes my report. I will be happy to answer any questions the city council may have.
Thank you. Are there questions of staff at this time? Okay. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. This is a receive and file, but may I have a, may I have a motion to receive and file?
And, Mayor, I'll make a motion to receive and file a report.
Okay. Is there, and I'll make a second. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Proton Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
All right, thank you. Number 11 is Approval of Annual Appropriation Limit for Fiscal Year 2019-2020. Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Proton, City Council. This staff report supports goal number one, ensuring our fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of revenue receipts and expenditure disbursements against approved budget adjustments. So November 6, 1979, California voters approved the GAN Spending Limitation Initiative. So what this means is that every year, okay, there is a limit as to appropriating taxes. That's basically it. Now, there's a formula for this, you know, they use a change per capita personal income, they consider the county's population, and based on that, they apply a limit. So for the city of Grand Terrace, our limit for appropriating revenue, specifically taxes, these are property taxes, sales tax, and business license tax, is 14.6 million. Now, based on our budget, what we are appropriating for 1920 is 4.2 million, way below that limit. Just for the benefit of the public, should we have received more taxes above that limit, the requirement is the city return those to its taxpayers. As you can see, it is, we are way below that limit. At this time, since it is a requirement by state and it has to be approved by the legislative body, I am recommending that city council approve the three items listed in the recommendations. That concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions the city council may have.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? All right, seeing none, I'll open public comment. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, close public comment and bring it back to council.
I move recommendations 1, 2, and 3.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Proton Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
All right. Item 12 is to approve professional services agreement for the grant processing of the Highway Safety Improvement Program, grant cycle nine, in the amount not to exceed $32,415. Mr. Allen French, Public Works Director.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Proton, council members. Thank you. Allen French, Public Works Director, here to present this item that supports 2030 goal number two, maintaining public safety. I'm here to discuss the contract for administering the guardrail grant project. The project will add, update, and repair guardrails on the streets of Barton, Mount Vernon, Vista Grande, and Vivienda in, around the city. The staff is requesting that the council approve the contract with Lynn Merrill and Associates. The estimated cost for the whole project is $648,000. The consultant's fee for the administering of the contract is $32,415. At this time, I'd like to introduce the consultant that won the competition, Lynn Merrill, from Lynn Merrill and Associates.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. It's my pleasure to be here tonight. We are looking forward to providing the contract administrative services for this particular grant. We believe that it is an important grant for the city, obviously, because it helps to ensure the public safety with the replacement of the guardrails at the various locations. Our firm has significant experience in contract administration. We've actually done several projects here in the city of Grand Terrace, including implementing the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program several years ago that resulted in replacement of the parking lot lights with LED fixtures. And that was a successful project. It involved us actually preparing bid documents, working with staff to go out for the bids, and assisting the staff in administering the contract, which it was successfully done. So we are certainly looking forward to assisting the city on this, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Merrill. Are there any questions of staff or Mr. Merrill at this time? Councilmember Wilson, uh, Mayor Proton Wilson?
I'm assuming whoever would like to answer this, assuming that we're spending $31,000 at a chance of $648,000 worth of benefit, is that correct?
Mayor Proton, the $31,000 would be paid for with the grant, so it's part of the $648,000.
Gotcha. And then, what are our chances? I mean, describe for us a little bit the process.
The grant has been awarded.
Mr. Duffy?
The grant has been awarded to us. The contract is to administer and to get the funds appropriated to us, but the grant has already been awarded to the city.
Good enough, can't do better than that. Thank you.
All right, any further questions? Okay. We'll go to public comment. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration.
I move approval of the item.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Hussey. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Proton Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Merrill, for waiting till the very last item.
Very happy to do so.
We look forward to seeing the completion of your work. And we will move to request for future agenda items by city council. So pursuant to our council policy, if a council member is interested in a task or project that will require more than an hour of staff time to complete, the item will be agendized to ask city council if the time should be spent on preparing a report and a proposed item. And so pursuant to the requirements of the Brown Act, no other items will be considered during this time, except for those on our list tonight, and of when we have, we have one item, grant request through Assemblymember Reyes's office for an ALPR camera and Neighborhood Watch signs. Councilmember Hussey, did you have a couple of things that you wanted to say regarding that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Gallo and Lieutenant Wolf for putting this together. We had a meeting with Assemblymember Reyes, and we were looking for additional funds for law enforcement, and this was her recommendation, that they can't do funds for law enforcement, but they could do one-time money. And so Mr. Gallo and Lieutenant Wolf got together, and the one-time money that they want to use is for, you know, license plate reader cameras, the new Neighborhood Watch signs, and other sign agent, also the installation and the backplane on there. And I would like just to request those staff could work with Mr. Gallo. He did a lot of work into it, so I don't think it's going to take that much time, but this is start the grant process and utilize the staff hours so they can fine-tune it.
Questions? Okay. Do we have Neighborhood Watch in effect right now for the signs?
That is one of the things that Mr. Gallo's working on, as far as the signs and establish a...
So would that be part of the discussion if this item comes back?
Yes.
Okay. So you're making the motion for this. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so motion by Councilmember Hussey, second by Councilmember Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Proton Wilson voting yes, Mayor McNabb voting yes.
All right. City Manager Communications, Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mayor. Just have a couple quick items. One is just to remind the citizens in the council that the Sandlot will be playing this Saturday at Veterans Freedom Park. It will be a combination of our music and movies in the park, so there'll be music from 7:00 p.m., and then the movie starts at 8:00 p.m. And it'll be the Sandlot, which is the movie we saw last year, and most people will really enjoy the Sandlot, and it's becoming a community favorite. The next item is Community Workshop Number Four, to bring back the Terrace Hills Middle School Pool. This is, will be at the Senior Center on Wednesday, June 26 to 19, at 9:00 a.m., and also, there'll be coffee and doughnuts. So we encourage everyone in the community to come out, visit the Senior Center for that meeting, and help us try to bring back the Terrace Hills Middle School Pool. It was a vital part of the community, so we're looking forward to bringing that back as we compete for the grant, we compete for the grant for about $2.8 million. But that's then my report, Mayor.
All right, thank you. So we have no closed session tonight, and we are just under three hours. All right, we will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting, but I want to remind you that we are closing tonight in memory of Esteban Carlo Gonzalez. Our next regular city council meeting will be held Tuesday, July 9, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on the future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. Thank you all, to all of you who came out tonight and expressed your opinion or learned more about our budget process, and I appreciate the council and their deliberations through our budget process. We are adjourned.